Today's February 10. And I apologize to all who are logged on and those who are here for the meeting that we are a little bit late getting going. I, we have with us Joe Chambers on technology on a Zoom call. We've got Roland Cecil, I'm Kathleen Alder, we've got Michael Fortune, and Robert Perry. And Mara Banda has asked to be excused, and I expect that Ryan Marlowe will be here doing either that, or have you seen him on Zoom? Or did you send him a Zoom link?
I sent everybody a Zoom link.
Okay.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I hope that you've all taken a look at the minutes. Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Roland Cecil, second by Robert Perry. Any discussion on it? I didn't see anything on it either. Okay. Jesse, I'm sure you're gonna be listening to this. Thank you for your quality work. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Joe, do I hear something from you?
Aye.
Thank you. I heard it that time. Okay. We are going to open for public comment. Persons wishing to express their views on issues with the commissioners within the commissioner's jurisdiction make an email or text. And so if we have anything started, do you have anything on the public comment?
If not, I just checked and I don't have anything in.
Okay. Anybody in the gallery that has anything to say? Okay. Not having any comments on the public comment, we will close that part of the meeting. We do not have a public hearing tonight. We do not have any legislative actions. And we have one administrative action and one study item. So, our administrative action is the planning commission will consider and may vote on a request to approve a final plat for Shoreline Estates Phase 1, a 23 single-family residential subdivision phase located in the general area of 700 East Spring Creek Parkway. So we've seen this before, we've talked about it, and are you guys here to talk about it tonight?
We are.
Okay. Tell us your name.
I'm Steve Earl, engineering, engineer for the project. And I'm just basically here just answering questions if they might have any concerns.
Okay. I don't have any right off the bat. It looks like you've handled most of any of the concerns that were expressed in the initial plat.
Yeah, I believe we've addressed all the concerns. There were a couple last minute items that Scarlett brought to our attention, and we have no problems addressing those. We're just waiting for advice from your attorney.
Okay.
So, yes, one of the...
Scott, would you please show up in on anything that we...
So, one of the conditions, they had a report done by CMT Engineering Laboratories. They're putting in detention, retention?
Detention.
A detention pond on Lot 20. And in that...
Just for my own, what is detention versus retention?
A detention has a way to release water, and a retention pond does not. The current stormwater standards, we kind of do a hybrid of both of them now, so it will retain water during 90% of the storms, but if anything exceeding that, it'll be allowed to release water.
Okay. All right, thank you.
In the report that was repaired, or excuse me, prepared by CMT, and you had a copy of this in your packets, it, there's a sentence in there that says, "Frequent maintenance, repair, and inspection must be performed on the wall. If any signs of erosion or movement are noticed, CMT must be contacted immediately to provide appropriate recommendations." And so we've requested that they put something, a note on the plat on Lot 20, so that people will know that there is maintenance expected. And if they, since that's what the report says, we're asking that they put that sentence from the report, so people will know that they need to contact. And we'll put that into the development agreement, we'll work that into the development agreement as well. Problem with the development agreement is they don't always get picked up. When the title company does their searches, they don't always see those little innuendos in the development agreement. So if we put it on the plat, it will be noticeable for someone when they purchase that home down the future. Usually the first purchaser knows all of the things they need to do. It's future purchasers that if they're not clearly identified, sometimes don't get the memo. So we're trying to do all we can to make sure that future purchasers understand their obligation.
Like you say, people coming down the pipe, buying an existing home, don't always get that information, so.
But I've submitted the wording to RCD Attorney. I emailed him and haven't heard back from him, but in talking with Steve, they said they would be happy to put the appropriate wording on the plat as soon as we get up.
Oh, I have a question. Looks like things are ready to go. And so I will entertain a motion.
I'll comment the motion that we approve the final plat for Shoreline Estates Phase 1, a 23 single-family residential subdivision phase located in the general area of 700 East Spring Creek Parkway, subject to the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and conditions as specified within the staff report.
A second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Michael Fortune, and a second by Roland Cecil. Any discussion on it? Anything further?
Yes, I have just a quick question on that red text. How often will the, will the frequent maintenance be done? Is there a time schedule for that, or?
Typically cities will require like an annual inspection, and they'll have somebody that's certified to come look at it, and then if they, and then that they'll kind of make that determination of maintenance needs to be done. But typically, if you have a detention pit like this in somebody's yard, it's best if they just incorporate it into their landscaping, plant grass in there or something. And if they do that, there's usually not that much of a maintenance problem.
Any more worries?
Yeah, well, like I said, if that's part of their lawn, then they'll just mow it during the summer, and then hopefully, but yeah, about the only maintenance you typically have with a detention, probably the Hills Boulevard Sedenture or something like that. But if the, once everything's landscaped, and if the streets are kept clean, you usually don't have much of a problem. Thank you.
Appreciate your information. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathleen, before I cast my vote, I need to make a disclosure to the, for the minutes. Can I make that?
Yeah.
About six months ago, Charlie Fulmer came in to, made an appointment with me. When people make appointments with me, I don't necessarily know what, what they're trying to make the appointment about or concerning. And he came in, and when I found out that it had something to do with the Providence City and the Planning Commission, I explained to him that I had a conflict, and I couldn't, I couldn't talk to him about it. And he was expressing some frustration about the, you gotta know Charlie, if you know Charlie, you can understand the context.
Charlie's here, so don't talk too bad about him when you're...
I, I won't. He was expressing some frustration about the timeframe that it took, and I just told him that he had the people necessary to get it done, and advised him just to follow through on it. But I do want to make that disclosure so that it's, it's on the record. And notwithstanding that, I would vote in favor of it.
Thank you. It's always good to get those kind of things on the table. Thank you. Okay, so the motion passes. I will go on to our next item. Thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay.
Appreciate your patience.
Thanks.
Good night. Before we get to a study item, what does it say, number two?
Because I just did two items. I just, it seemed to be confusing the last time, when I had item one, item two, item three, and then started over again.
Okay.
So I just went...
Okay, so we didn't, we're not missing anything?
No.
Okay. But before we start into that, my question to all of you is, do you want to have in-person meetings, or do, would you rather have Zoom meetings?
In-person.
Okay, Joe?
I, I got a Zoom invitation. I was going to attend, but when I got the Zoom invitation, I thought that, so either one.
Okay. Personally, I like in-person, but I'm kind of old school and have been to lots of meetings in-person. And so...
I had a discussion a few years ago, and almost everyone was saying we wanted to have this in-person.
That was my sense.
Yes.
But in discussing it with staff, they hadn't really heard from anyone as to what they wanted to do, so we can continue to have it in-person if that's really what you would prefer. Michael, I was, I didn't know if you would be here tonight. Haven't you had surgery yet, or you're going?
Next week.
Okay.
Next week, a couple of them, so I'll see you before the next meeting. If anything else happens to me, or...
Let's hope not. Be careful.
I had mine last week. I looked...
Oh, did you have your eyelid?
I looked a raccoon. Totally black.
Well, masks kind of helps cover all that stuff up, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you're going to be doing in-person, do you still want to accept comments via email and text, and allow people to attend by Zoom and YouTube and all of that?
I do.
Okay.
That gives people, it gives people a lot of options to attend, and we want to make sure everyone feels comfortable that they can attend in whatever format, unless that's a problem.
It is a bit more challenged if, if a mixed meeting, but we'll work with what the council, with the commission is, is interested in. From, from my end, there is a lot of benefit for electronic because it's easy to throw up and, and do and show some of the agendas, and some of those items. We'll work with the technology. It's not, it's not the same. I've tried to put up and down. One that we had had, although you have an interest, and that's good, I haven't heard from the public a push to have in-person, so, so from that end, that was kind of my question, is are you getting interest from the public pushing for, for this venue? Have they enjoyed the venue that we've had? I just, I guess that was the question I was kind of posing to, to Madam Chair. And at that point, if there was, if there was other things we're not hearing, because you, because you're in, everybody's in a different circle, and if that's the case, we'd like to be able to know how and what, what, what you're hearing on it. So, but in technicality, this is one of the reasons why a virtual meeting is, is there. One, this isn't on the agenda, so we need to move on. Secondly, you need to make sure that when, when the meeting's over, you leave. There's not an after meeting. And that, that is something that you need to make sure that this is not a social, this is, this is meeting, and we leave.
Okay.
Agreed.
So, each of you got a link to the mixed use. The council has asked us to discuss it, and specifically look at the density that is included in this. And the last time, as we looked at a mixed use project, we were kind of struggling with what it ought to look like and how it should be, and, but I, right now, I think I would like to talk about the density, and what some of you may have found out or thought about as you read through the information. Please come. Please come. So, you'd like to share what you found out as you, as you read through that information? It's all the detail. It's an extreme amount of detail. Scarlett, do you have anything that you want to start us off with? Anything you want to say, or you... What's in all this?
Well, I think, I think that the density, I think the density, part of the reason why the density numbers are a problem is because I don't think that we've, either we haven't articulated well enough in the code, in the text of the code, or we're just not, we, or maybe we've got developers that are trying to put a square peg in a round hole, because I, I don't feel like the problem is as much the density as it is the continuity of the development. I don't know how you feel when you look at, at the development, and I don't know what picture you see in your head when you think of mixed use. So maybe you think the continuity is there. But that's, that's kind of, as staff, that's kind of where we were. We didn't really see continuity in the first few designs that we would have liked to have seen. I think if we could achieve the continuity, the density, while I think 39 is, is quite dense for Providence City, I think if we could achieve the continuity and achieve the goal of the ordinance, then the density would be a little bit, I think we could get a better feel for what kind of density we want. But just looking at the development that you are working with, that's on the table right now, the other, the, the second one, they're redesigning theirs, and so they're coming back in with it. But the Providence Center that you've looked at, that had 23 units per acre, so, per net acre. So if you felt like the design of that, and the, and you felt, if you feel like the design is that, if you feel like the look of that is what you're trying to achieve, then maybe we start with a basis of that. We, we feel like that's a good number. Keep in mind that in the multifamily high density, that's 18 units per acre, and that's what the townhomes, the Providence Gateway Townhomes were built to, and the, can't remember what, the one across the street on the south side of 100 South, I can't remember the name of that development, but those, those developments were built to 18 units per acre. The townhomes that are right over here, the Creekside Townhomes, not these right next door to us, but the white ones, the ones that have been here for quite some time, they were built to 12 units per acre. The townhomes that are going up right next door to us, they're 18 units an acre. So if you look at those, and actually looking at the townhomes right here, is kind of getting an idea of what multifamily high in a mixed use area would be, because you've got those townhomes, you've got those business offices, you've got our complex here.
But they are next to each other.
They are next to each other, so that's kind of, but they don't have continuity. Like you said, they're not connected. So I don't know exactly what, what your feelings are on the look of what we're trying to achieve with mixed use. If we're just trying to achieve a mix of multifamily and retail, then maybe the 18 units per acre is a more appropriate idea. However, if you like the look of the 23, there's certainly no reason why you couldn't say 23, but if they're going to actually incorporate it in the vertical, then perhaps 30 is a reasonable number for vertical, but the, but it would have to be incorporated in the vertical in order to get that. So those are just some of the thoughts that I've had as I've gone around and looked at, at some of the different developments. I do feel like, in my mind, the continuity of the development is a key issue, but that may not be as important to the commission, so.
And the mixed use allows 39, which is a lot. A lot, a lot.
If it's vertical.
If it's vertical, right. The, the concept that we just approved last time is the one behind Macy's, and they are at 23. They were at 24, then took one unit out in order to put a driveway through there. And that seems to be quite heavy. That's a 23. So what are your thoughts, commission members?
I was just wondering why Logan had, how they came up with their numbers. 34, a mixed residential high, would that have been vertical?
Right. Do you know?
I don't have their ordinance pulled up. I actually think that that, it says in there, Bob, I can't remember if that was, if vertical was required or not. Let me get to the ordinance really quick.
Here's those apartments in stacked housing. Would that be vertical then, stacked? Okay. Yeah, then, if they're 30, being stacked housing. I also thought that our 39, our number of 39 is kind of high.
I do too. Thank you. In looking at it and going and looking at a couple of different properties, I think that the 39 is just too high. And I understand that at times, that for the developers, to make things work, and try to get as mu, as many units per acre as they can, I just think the number, it should be somewhere between 25 and 30. I do like this multifamily high, the stuff that we have now in Providence where it's 18, and this other that was 20, reduced down to 23, I actually think those look nice. I think that's a good look. So, being new to this and that area and that respect of stuff, I don't have a lot of experience with it. I do know what looks nice to me is the unit, the development we had where it's 18 or 23 in that area. Some of the others that where they could go as high as 39 units, I just, I just think that's too much.
Something that, as a commission, we need to keep in mind, and that is that there's a limited amount of land, and it's fast getting used up with all the developments that are, that are, you know, this, if there's just been an explosion of developments this last six months. Has it been longer than that, do you think, or just six months?
Longer.
Okay.
It's really picked up in the last six months, but we have been, it's a double-edged sword, but I will still say we have been fortunate in that people want to come to Providence. And so it's kept us busy, but we do have people that want to come, and that's always a good thing, to have people want to come to your city instead of leave your city, so...
Mayor, you have a comment?
So...
You should probably get up by the mic, so if he can capture you.
So, we're talking about density of 39 units per acre. I guess my question would be, we've got a height limitation, so if you were to fit 39 units per acre...
At 45 feet.
What would that look like? And so, I mean, there's, there's times I could imagine that the development might not be all three-bedroom condos or townhomes. It might be one-bedroom apartments, it might be studios, it might be a mix of, of two-bedroom. I don't know, up in Logan, you get into what's that development there, the Falls?
The Falls.
Yeah, I wonder what their density is. I think, are they three-story or four?
I think they're three.
So it'd be interesting to find out what that density is, but we can't every, have everything be three-bedroom condos, three-bedroom townhomes, everything. I mean, there is a demand for people that just need a one-bedroom condo or townhouse.
I have a grandson that's looking for a studio.
For a studio, which suits them just fine. I mean, we can't do one-size-fits-all, and what we're doing with this mixed use is we're offering a developer an option, and options. And, you know, you get into a higher density area, a lot of times the smaller units are what's more desirable, so, you know, closing the door on it and saying everything has to fit. We're trying to give a developer some options and some flexibility, and to suit the market, and that's, I think, the way this thing was written. There's some things in, I don't like some of the verbiage in it, and I'd probably go over it with a fine-tooth comb, but, I mean, that, that's my two cents on, on development. Where Logan's going, it'd be interesting to look at their town center ordinance, and I mean, they're going to 80 feet.
Yeah.
But we're not all one-size-fits-all, we're not all married individuals with kids, and...
Plus the population is larger than that we have here in Providence. The other thing to consider is the higher density that you have, the more parking it's going to take. And so then do you end up with a huge parking lot and no green space? So is that really what we want? Mayor?
Go on. So, interesting, north of, just up the street here, Golf Course Road, there's a development, it's in, they've seen conceptual designs, different ones, and it's owned by a company called Prolog. It's one of the Wasatch companies, and a couple of the developers that are involved with it, Nate Lishman, and what's his dad?
Bruce.
Bruce Lishman, I don't know if you know. But they've come up with a concept where they've got apartments, and they've got an office building, and they've got, they're trying to get some commercial in the, the office building, a pharmacy, and some other things, they're looking at different auctions. But it'd be interesting to find out, to pull out that, the old copies of what, you know, what they were trying to, and they have five or six.
Is that the, the property that's there by Swig?
Yes, east of Swig.
Yeah.
Because there's a pharmacy there already.
Could be on this side.
Yeah.
So it's right across from the vet clinic up here. So it'd be interesting to see what they had come up with. I don't, we need to get to the point where they submitted something where we were going to go through the numbers and evaluate, but they were looking for interested retail tenants for that. I think they were trying to target a mixed use type of development that would suit our, our city code.
Is that the one I saw a copy of today?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Did we get one? Is there a new one?
No, no, not a new one. I just, I just shared it with you.
No, no, not a new one. I just, I just shared with her the one thing before. Just, yeah, just kind of showing what an example of, of a mixed use, a vert- or a horizontal mixed use would more look like.
Does some interesting things. He likes, likes to make them super energy efficient. Solar panels, you know, well built, uh, well insulated. So the operating costs for the tenants are, are at, to a minimum. Yeah, it was really interesting what they do.
I guess what we have to do, and the challenge for us, is to write a code that helps people understand that's what we're looking for. Um, a unified development that looks like it belongs together, that has a reasonable amount of, um, dwellings and parking, enough parking for what's there, and then some commercial, but it all looks like it belongs together.
And green space.
And some green space. So, um.
That's the tough thing right now because we think that a density, a number of units is too much, but you can look at the other side of it. To meet the demand, that demand is changing. As, as the mayor was saying, maybe we are going to have more where studios, one bedrooms, and then, then that changes it.
At that point, the density would be higher, but the footprint wouldn't be the same.
Yeah, right. And, um, then the emphasis becomes on the design of it for the, to address the parking issue, the, the parking issues and the green space. I think those are important. People want to have their trails and all those things and, and still keep that good look. But I can see if the demand is, if we're losing, if we're losing opportunities because we don't have somebody, or if we change this and we take this 39 units away, um, do developers look at other places to, where they can put those? So I think there's the, the two sides of it. I don't know that we've come up, we've had anything presented where it would, it would address that, that they, they're looking for the studios or the one bedrooms or, you know, not the typical three bedroom units. Maybe we haven't come across it, and that's why we're thinking of reducing that down.
Although last time, last meeting, um, um, what was their name? The, the ones that are north of the theaters, Knights?
Yes. No.
No.
The Spring Creek Apartments, the, on the Danes property, if you're talking about northern theaters.
We did ask them if they would consider doing something that was in short term housing.
Right.
And in that case, it might be a studio.
Right.
Which then would increase the density.
Right.
And if it's a studio, maybe, I don't know. If you need two parks, two parking spaces for a studio or.
If it's specified, if, uh, that if we're going to so many feet, like 39 feet, then it cannot be more, any more than two bedrooms.
I don't know that I want to limit it.
Well, it's just a thought. Where they, okay, 30 acres, you have a three bedroom facility and going down the line.
Bob, the chair?
Yes.
Are we thinking about maybe raising the height limit?
That's always an option, but I don't know how many units you can get in 45 feet. Cause that's the height limit now. And it would depend on how many three bedroom, how many two bedroom, how many one bedroom you've got in there, which could very quickly increase the density, probably to 39. But I don't know if that's possible. Does anybody here know that? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that.
What, what did you ask?
If we decrease the numbers of units, what if somebody comes along and wants to do a, a development that has one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom and studios all encompassed in one building? That could raise the density significantly if you're not using up all that space for lots of bedrooms. And so if we limit the density to 23, then are we limiting what people, the flexibility of people to be able to put a development on there that would be profitable for them, but comfortable for the people that are living there? Don't know.
I don't know that question to that either. We would have to, actually, we'd have to reach out to the development community and, and we'd have to reach out to the development community that is familiar with this, that, that really does do this and supports mixed use, not, not the part of the development community that is just trying to, um, get additional space for multifamily to, to find that out. Now, I do know when Nate Lishman talked to us six or eight months ago, however long that's been, he did have a variety of, uh, units from state to not. Our current parking requirement, since you were talking about parking, our current parking requirement in our mixed use zone is, um, residential units will require at least one and a half spaces per unit. Non-residential units may consider, excuse me, the parking on the, may consider the parking available on public streets as meeting the development requirements. So, but the thought process of that was that this was going to be more of a walkable community where, and people would walk up, park on the street, kind of, kind of the old fashioned hometown feel. In Logan's ordinance, they have, they do their parking by unit type. I think the studio is, gotta pull it back up. Studio one bedroom units are 1.5 parking stalls per unit. Two bedroom units are larger, are two parking stalls per unit. And then there's one visitor parking for 10 units. And so that's how they do. And then the commercial parking is the minimum number of spot stalls based on the type. So they refer back to their commercial parking code for, for the commercial portion of it. So. We do.
Well, we clearly need to do a little bit more research and see what we can find out about, what that might mean if somebody did a variety of units in a building that's 45 feet high, so that we don't limit what a builder can do, but still looks nice. We've said that 45 feet high is, is what we're willing to accept, unless we want to change that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And what Scott was talking about, it'd be worthwhile if we tried to have a public hearing and ask for how many developers come in and discuss they seem to tell us what they think about it and let us ask them questions.
You wouldn't necessarily need to do that by public hearing. You could just invite them to come to your public meeting and.
Right, invite them to come and do that. But I, we, you know.
We've got questions that we are not builders and developers, so we don't know.
We just don't, we just don't know what's what.
Yeah. Okay. What I, I would like to propose, that we do that. Scarlett and Ryan can help us identify some people that would be knowledgeable to come in and talk with us and answer our questions about, um, the density in a building and what's possible. And, um, I think if we have that information, we can then make an informed decision about what we should do with this, um, ordinance. We also probably, if there are some things that we need to strengthen in here to help developers understand that we're looking for, um, a mixed use that is cohesive and allows walkable, um, areas and green space as well as living and commercial.
And adequate parking.
Pardon me?
And adequate parking.
And adequate parking, right. Cause that's going to be a lot of parking.
Yes, it is.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question? Um, Scarlett and Ryan, is there a way for us to know that within Providence, we have so many townhouses, condominiums, apartments? And to know, um, how many three bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedrooms? Or anything like that, that we would have that information?
We don't have that information compiled.
Yeah.
Be a lot of work to compile, a lot of phone calls to make.
Yeah. I was just curious, so we know what, what maybe we're lacking, that what first, you know, do we have a real small percentage of one bedroom, um, apartments? Or are there even any studios in, in the Providence area, anything like that?
In my circle, I don't, I don't know of anybody, any that we have. That was why I suggested to the group last time, you know, have you thought about some short stay kind of stuff? Because there's, there's not a lot of that in the valley.
I think what we've heard from the public before is the life cycle zone too, too dense. Some of the other things that we've worked on in the past, too dense. I think when we get the public in on this, we're going to find out that maybe that's not what Providence needs to be, or the look of Providence.
Well, we have, like I said, we have to recognize that we're running out of space.
Yeah.
As well. And.
That may just be the end of it.
More people or more taxes. Um, as we demand more and more services, we need to have more taxes. And a denser population brings in more tax. And nobody knows what retail's going to look like. Um, I was in the mall this afternoon, and I'll tell you what, there are about maybe six stores in there that are open. All the rest of them are closing down. Several were having closeout sales. So to, to depend on retail, that is going to bring tax dollars that way. We do get internet tax dollars, but, um, we really have to understand what we're talking about when we start limiting what, what people can do. The con- the consequences are.
You heard the rumors about what the Macy's and Bogan's, but that's going to be our target. You know, what, what ShopCo is going to do, we have two of those stores that look like they're, they're going to be filled.
I think the Kmart building is going to be taken up with their, the, um, farm store that. Cal Ranch is going over there.
Yep. Of course, that leaves another open spot in the mall.
Yeah.
There goes the spot.
Yes. The Cal Ranch, the spot that they're in, you almost can't walk through the place it's a little crowded.
Yeah, it's too small.
Let me ask you a question about our ordinance. If you look on page two of three, we talked about this before, but I really want you to think about this because, yeah, under F, it says, um, "The proposed development shall be designed with a common theme that reflects the heritage and community of Providence and traditional small town streetscapes." Is that really what you want these developments down here on the west side of Gateway Drive? To look like Old Main Street in Providence? Or to create, uh, traditional small town streetscapes?
Well, that moves the town center that direction, if it, if that's true.
I don't know. I just, I don't know, I honestly don't know if that's really an achievable goal.
Not a reasonable request.
Maybe, I don't know. If, if that is really what you want, then we need to push a little, we need to articulate that. Because as Joe reminded us, I think maybe in the last meeting, while we want to be open enough that the developer has some leeway, we want to be strong enough in our ordinance that we can get what we're trying to achieve. So I guess my question is, what do you see when it, when you read that statement? What would you imagine a development to look like if reading that statement reflects the heritage and community of Providence and traditional small stow- small town streetscapes? What would you think that would look like? Would it have, would it have street trees? Would it have, um, curb gutter and sidewalk? Would it have, um, swells instead? What would you, what do you picture in your mind when you think of small town streetscape?
Think of a cowboy movie.
So boardwalks, instead of concrete sidewalks.
Mud streets.
The townhomes that we saw in Smithfield, they have it mended into the city. That's what I'm thinking what they're driving at. Each house is the, is the townhomes they're in, they built. Over here right now, don't fit that description.
But they're not mixed use. This is mixed use? No, yeah, this is mixed use that's requiring this.
Right. And, and so I'm asking, is that a realistic requirement? Is that really what we want?
We're not consistent in what we're asking developers to do. So we've got mixed use that we're saying we want it to be old town looking, but developers can build high density housing and make them modern looking. We haven't required them to be old town, um,
Small town.
Heritage, uh, type of a look. Mayor, you've got a comment?
So I think we got mixed use.
Need to borrow a mic.
Not on Zoom, we're in person. So to me, what I hear from this discussion is mixed use sends mixed messages to a developer.
Right.
I mean, we're saying one thing, and, and it's kind of hard to create an old town environment. You know, and then we describe what mixed use is going to include. It's been very difficult. And, and, you know, part of that is, is kind of the old mom and pop live up store and they run a retail downstairs. You know, old town, I mean, and there are old towns, some in the Midwest you can go through, and that's the way the downtown is, is one main street. That's what it looks like. It's nice, walkable and in old town, but it's, yeah, it's like a cowboy movie, but.
If I go into Kansas, you can see it.
To see, yeah, and I'm yeah, I've taken trips on two wheels and that, I love to drive through those towns, but, um, I'm not sure that that fits Providence. Not on Gateway Drive. I don't think we're going to be able to replicate that. I mean, every time we've had a conversation, whether it's Danes here or Knight over here, uh, and we've had some developers come in and scratch their head and they try really hard at it. It ends up being separate buildings. It's never really been a message, so. Um, maybe there's a way to make this work. We have mixed use residential, we have mixed use commercial. It's called Holder's Square over here, but we're trying to marry the two together and the developer over here. So I would have accomplished the same thing if I had two parcels of property. I put my commercial over here, I put my residential over here. That's what I ended up getting. It doesn't seem like we're, the intent of this mixed use ordinance or the, or code is, is accomplishing what I think the authors of this, and the council at the time wanted to accomplish. I think we're trying to make this work, but I'm not seeing it work because we, developers keep pushing back and saying, you know, and I, I know, I guarantee, I know they try hard to figure out how to do what we're talking about. You get what I'm saying, right?
I do. I do.
Thanks.
Well, Madam Chair, my answer. Um, I looked on, um, the city of Logan website where we got those links to look at some of their stuff. And that's the other concern, because we ran into that over here behind Macy's. Because it was really like two parcels, the commercial thing being developed and the residential.
Two developments.
Two developments. But for that piece of property, that was kind of the only way it could work. We felt better about that. But even with Logan, if you look on there, they, they have the same thing of what their mixed use is. It's a piece of property with four different types of things, but it's really, if you're four lots, it's all separate. It's not intermixed together and so forth. So, and I just thought. and I just thought, that's not the answer either. And so I think that's where we're trying to find out what, where is it? What is it that looks that way, other than a vertical building with retail on the bottom and units above? And sidewalks and trails and things. That's, that's a good part of it, but you get anything bigger than that where commercial developer, their, their clients want to have, want their own, their own building and that type of stuff. How do you integrate all that in and make it all look good? I think that's the thing I'm still not sure clear about.
I honestly think the closest thing we've come to what the authors of this mixed-use code.
Intended.
Was intended. The closest thing to that is the live-work type of townhomes that Visionary is trying to do right on, on the ones on Gateway. What is that called? North?
Providence North Gateway.
Providence North Gateway. That's the closest.
The one between the church and the.
Yes. And, and that's where downstairs can be, you know, a business or retail, a shop, engineer, accountant, lawyer, whatever. And there's residence. That's the closest thing I think what they were wanting to create.
And the difference between that one and the mixed use is that mixed use has a percentage.
Right.
There are percentages that, that the developer has to stand where they are.
Right.
And, you know, people may choose to have live-work or not.
Right. And, and they, by design, they're all on Gateway. The other units in the back are not live-work and they don't have the additional amenities or whatever they are, then they probably get a premium price for those two.
Right.
But they're designed for people who are walking along Gateway, you know. Makes it a walkable thing. There's a shop, you know, you can visit the shop and then when you're done, you cross the street and go Macy's or whatever. So I think that is kind of what was said it was intended.
Man.
Yes, sir.
I was on the fine transition line of Logan one, what you're describing is exactly what people thought, thought, thought it was.
What's that?
What you're describing is exactly what you thought it was.
Well, when Alder Square was initially started and mixed use came up, in my mind, mixed use was stores on the bottom, living on top. As opposed to separate buildings for, for everything.
So you've got some insight into this, Kathleen. David? What's his last name?
Gaskell.
Gaskell. I mean, they do all kinds of different developments in Utah. They must, they know what works. And if something like that worked, they could tell us how to make it work or whether it would work at all.
Okay, I will take that as an assignment.
I mean, I mean, I don't, I would throw, when you talk to them, talk to them about the, the live-work. I mean, just say, is there interest in that? I mean, have you developed anything like that? You know, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, Am Source is selling that piece of property behind and the developers are different. They are not Am Source.
No, I know, I, no, I know that. I know that, but.
But, yes, I, I will take that as an assignment for our next meeting. I will talk with them and see what they can come up with. If we can get a couple of developers that would come in and talk to us about what they see as density issues. And how, like how many can we put in? How many apartments or living units can we put in a forty-five-foot building? And I would like to ask the commission if everyone will take a look at that wording, specifically the wording that talks about Western towns.
Small town. Traditional small town. No old, no, no Western.
See if there's some way that we can define that so that it is stronger and more definitive for a developer that might be looking at that.
Well, I guess my question would be is, do you want to tell them that you want it to look small-town? Or, or do you want to just allow them to come in with creative design and, and see what you get? So that's part of my question is.
I have some thoughts on that when you're through, Scarlett.
I'm through. Let me just, let me take a, Joe, let me take a comment from, from Rowan. He, he asked to say something before. No, you're, okay, he's through. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I had two thoughts. First off, I'm, I'm not so vested in the language. I'm more concerned about the, the, that the development would be consistent or transition from the neighboring, the neighborhood adjacent to it. That, and, and I like the idea that you don't tie the architects or the engineers' hands. That, that's just my initial feeling. The second thought is we've had a couple of, of young men from Providence that have gone into engineering and architecture. These, these people I'm going to mention, I'm not tied to them, but I just know them through my son Josh because they were friends of his. One is Justin Campbell, who, who has an architect's license and purchased Cartwright Engineering from his father-in-law and does a substantial amount of, of work. And then there's Steve Thurr, who is his partner, who he grew up in Providence. And then there's also Danny McFarland. And I'm not tied to them, but you know, if you got Gary Knighton and if he would come in and Danny and a couple of those guys, they could bounce it around with the developers and give us some ideas that maybe we're out of our, our, out of my gene pool. I won't say yours, but on, that's just the two thoughts I have.
Well, none of us are developers on here and I think that's kind of what we're struggling with.
Yeah.
We want to make it as flexible as possible, but still maintain the integrity of what we want to have happen in Providence. Is that a fair statement? Okay, so, Mayor?
Just another example I thought of, Edwards Furniture.
It's being divided.
Right, that, that is, and there's a parcel behind it. What is that, seven acres?
Yeah.
To the east of.
The owners, yeah, the developers. And Joe was talking about transition and I think this is a good place to interject this. They were talking about a live-work and, you know, right off the highway and setback behind Edwards, which is of course subdivided now the building, but the same people own that parcel. They came to the city and said, what do you think? And they were talking about a live-work type of, you know, not on the highway, but setback. And of course, that's kind of a transition from a, you know, that type of density to, to, to residential. And I, I was kind of, was hoping that that would come to fruition. It would go forward. I don't know. They ran into some problems, but I think they were kind of brainstorming it and saying, you know, maybe we can make this work and fit in the mixed use. I don't know if the council shot it down or it went.
I don't remember exactly where it went, but they were trying, you, you brought up the mixed use and there's a little bit more of a difference between the east and the west side of the street over in the Gateway North and the Providence Town Center. And maybe that's something, I'm not saying that I would promote this one way or the other, but you could look at the uses that you allow in the multifamily high zone. Right now, the way that's written, those have to be done as a home business. Which means the owner ha, of the business has to reside in the prop, on the, in the house. And so that owner couldn't separate the bottom. They couldn't sell it off. They couldn't lease it to an independent person to do something completely different. So maybe that's an area where you maybe want to consider what kind of think that that you work on, you live on top and you work in the bottom. So it fits right with what our, the way our zone is currently crafted, because it allows a lot of different types of home business. But yet, if there's people that really don't want to run the business below, but they'd like to earn the income from leasing that space out to somebody that does have a business, we wouldn't allow that to happen. So they would still, they still stay there and live there, but the, the space, they would have to use it as their workspace. They couldn't lease it to someone or someone else.
Greater flexibility would be.
I'm just saying that, that's something you might want to look at a little bit.
To see that perspective of somebody being able to, to be flexible enough to make that happen. We have an audience member. Come up and tell us your name.
My name is Nisha Perry. I'm a resident here in Providence and just an interested resident. I am a real estate agent as well, so have particular interest in property management or property development and properties in general.
Were you on when we were talking about the Third South?
You mean another meeting, in another meeting?
It was a Zoom meeting.
No, no, but I'm very interested in this upcoming meeting that it sounds like is going to happen with some developers, just to learn. You know, just to hear what they say, because I, I would be really curious to hear their thoughts as well. But this live-work idea, have you guys seen the Wolfpack Grocery Store on the way to Green Canyon High School in those live-work?
Yeah, I've been by there.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I happened to stop by and talk to the owner of that because our brokerage is actually selling some live-work in Logan and just wanted to get his opinion about what it's like to actually own that and then own the grocery store. And, and I think he loves it. I think he loves the idea that he can make some income, you know, on, as well as just own the, the place. I don't know that his grocery store is like thriving. I think he needs better signage and I think he needs some advertising and stuff. Think he needs a fountain, fountain machine. You know, there's just a few things I would like, well, what about this? What about that?
You could be his consultant.
His mother, actually, it was interesting because his mother was just about ready to buy one of these townhomes. And I showed him some of the live-work in town and the one, the other one that, that our brokerage has listed potentially could be like an Airbnb, just a studio room that someone could just rent, you know? And he said, my, I would love my mom to live there and have a source of income in her home rather than just buy a townhome here. So anyway, those are just some thoughts, you know, in terms of that live-work. I think he would be an interesting, like guest speaker, you know, because he like lives that life. The business owner and he owns the townhome as well. And then my second thought is, I was just in Tremont yesterday at my daughter's basketball game over there at Bear River.
They need to be closer because they, they can't get it in a minute.
Oh, okay. I was over in Bear River in Tremont and I happened to be just on some of, one of their main streets, I guess. But I don't know if you've seen this, but they've got a mural on the side of one of their buildings. It's the chocolate bomber. The whole side of that building is that, is that mural.
A big mural, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the chocolate bomber, you know, with a her, and then Hershey kisses and then him and then airplanes and but artwork. I mean, is there any way of incorporating art to kind of the design to create just a really unique town? That's my thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, great thoughts. We love it. Thank you. Ryan, you had a comment?
I, I do. I, I think if Joe has a good contact with developers, sometimes that relationship invite is as good as anything else. And I would say that would be, yeah, that would be great. Because I think, I think he has a definite connection and anytime we can bring those connections and invite from there, it goes a long way.
Well, can you take that as an assignment?
If you want me to, tell me that, have Scarlett tell me what meeting date you want and I'll get an invitation out.
Okay. We just need to decide if, if we need to have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. Do you think of any stuff that we have on the agenda?
I'll have to look, Kathleen. I can't think of it. Like, I know we've got some concept plans submitted, but you don't see the concept plan, so I don't, I don't know if we've got any preliminaries or finals that will be ready, but let me look and see, because if we do, we certainly don't want to put them off any longer than we have to.
We could easily set this up for the tenth, because you, you will have a meeting on that day.
Okay. So let's go with the tenth. If you'll invite them for the tenth.
Okay.
And, but I'd like to have Robert and, you're going to have some time on your hands, Michael, right?
Whether I'll be coherent or not.
We might get some interesting information. I'd like you to look at the wording and maybe incorporate some of the, the things that we've heard tonight. Ideas of, of live-work and ideas of, of artwork. I love that, the thoughts of that. You know, when we had the Olympics, Salt Lake had all those great big posters that were hanging down off the building. So it doesn't necessarily need to be something that is permanently painted on the side of the building. It could be a place to display, something like that. That would be fun to, to have something like that. Well, Rowan? Do you think about some of that stuff too and get some ideas down?
I'll get your brain removed. I'll do it now.
I bet you can. You have lots of good ideas. Okay. So, we're not making a decision tonight. We've still got some studying to do and some more information to collect. And my assignment will be, Jesse, if you can get, make sure that the assignments are spelled out. To talk with Dave Gaskell about what he might have seen statewide. That would help us with more definitive information that we can put in our code that would be helpful to, to developers as they're thinking about developing something in the Providence area. So. We, any questions? Okay. So our meeting, we're through the agenda and so I will entertain a motion to. That we adjourned. Okay, we have a motion, Michael, at the second. All in favor? Thanks to each of you. Thanks, Joe.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you.
Were you emailing me your phone number? The mayor was supposed to send it to you, maybe didn't.